Okay, good evening and welcome to the October 17th Palmer Town Council meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item is visitors' comments.
If anybody is here tonight to ask questions of the council regarding Superintendent Gardner, the council doesn't have any other information other than the information that was shared with parents and staff at this point in time. If we get more information, we'd be happy to share it, but at this point in time, we do not have any. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Seeing nobody?
Pretty sure on that note, there's a school committee meeting on Wednesday night.
There is.
Yes, so...
Okay, I'm going to ask that we do the minutes of September 12th at our next meeting, if that's okay with everybody?
Oh yeah, it's fine.
Okay. First item under Old Business is the Bring Your Own Brew (BYOB) ordinance, second reading and public hearing. Bob, could you please read the second reading? I think that was it.
That was it. I think it was the notes still.
No, I think that...oh, I don't know.
You have it in a hard copy still?
I do not.
I think there was one, I think it was just that.
The purpose of these regulations is to allow patrons to bring alcoholic beverages into an establishment for their personal consumption in a manner that is compliant with Mass General Law, Chapter 138.
Do you know what time the public hearing is?
Oh, in the paper?
Yeah.
I don't off the top of my head.
You can't start the public hearing before the advertised time, before 6:40?
Here with us one second, if you could, thank you.
6:40.
What time was the road repair moment?
If you want the paper, is that it, Bob?
If you have it, Carl.
It's one right here.
Okay, the public hearing's at 6:40, so we need to wait a minute to open the public hearing. We're gonna skip to the revolving fund, charge point vehicle charging fees, first reading. So it's ordinance 2023-02. The purpose of the ordinance is to authorize revolving funds for the use of town departments, boards, committees, agencies, and officers in connection with the operation of programs or activities that generate fees, charges, or other receipts to support all or some of the expenses of those programs or activities. These revolving funds are established, under and governed by Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half. And this ordinance looks to set up a revolving fund for EV charging stations to be the department authorized to spend the funds as the town manager's office. The fees or charges credited to the fund are fees collected from the usage of the electric vehicle charging stations. The program or activity expenses are payable from expenses related to the charging stations and the fiscal year that this will begin will be fiscal '24 and beyond. And that's the first reading. The public hearing will be at our next meeting in November. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay, I have the temper...I have the next one.
Okay. It's still not 6:40, so New Business, we have an appointment of Lori Walder to the Palmer Redevelopment Authority. Did you wanna say anything about that?
She's a highly qualified person who will be a great contributor to the Palmer Redevelopment Authority. She has a background in commercial real estate.
Do we have a motion to appoint Lori Walder to the Palmer Redevelopment Authority? Motion by Carl, second by Matt. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, I'm just gonna wait the one minute for the public hearing. Should've done those minutes.
Just an observation that the times are not on the agenda.
No, I know, but he had the...
I got you.
I know, but they should be, yeah. Okay, it is 6:40, so I will open the public hearing on the BYOB. So any questions or comments from the council?
Oh.
I'll open it to the public in a minute.
Is there a fee attached to it yet?
No.
No.
Okay.
Phil, did you have something you wanted to say or...
I don't even know how to get that out.
Holding your thought at the moment?
I know it was brought to his attention that certain businesses would like this. And now from learning about it, is there's already something in place where if people wanted to just walk in to say Carl's with a beer, they could legally do so?
From the legal review that I got, yes. But there's no structure to it if you don't create these regulations.
Right, so theoretically, you know, place already, you could walk in to like Carl's and you know, people once in a while would come in.
Especially me.
Would you, you know, do this? Is there even a need for this? I guess is where I'm going, now that everything has started to come out to light that, I mean, it's something that people could already do.
Correct, but the town has, the town's liquor licensing board has, does not have the ability to set regulations without this ordinance.
Well, if there was never, I guess, any regulations on it, does there really need to be more laws and regulations for it? Other than somebody already knows they can go on a certain place and bring their own. I don't know, that's just kinda where, as information's come, that, is it something that's necessary?
Okay, if any, I'm gonna open it to the public. I just ask that you come forward to the microphone and identify yourself for the record. And I saw a hand. Yep.
Hi, I'm Jason. I just have a quick question. Just if you're pushing the BYOB stuff, have you guys like thought of the consequences of it? You know, more booze in our area? Cause I know you have previously mentioned brewery or some kind of, something in town. It's not the best idea, because you're gonna be having more, potentially, not going to, but potentially, having more, needing more police presence, having more police action, potentially more drunk driving, especially with BYOB, who is going to be controlling it. Even if we can legally do it now, most people don't, because restaurants don't generally allow it, because they sell it. So they don't want people to be cutting into their profits. The people that would allow it, don't sell it now. Just a thought.
Okay.
Thanks.
Do you know his last name for that? Okay. Anybody else wanna speak on this?
Paul Barnard. I just have a couple of questions, like if they are going to allow the BYOB, are they required to carry any type of insurance to cover when the people leave their place? If they've been drinking and they get into an accident, who's liable? A person leaving the place or the establishment where they're drinking at? Cause I own a restaurant myself, and I have to carry extra liability insurance for when people leave and drinking. Now, do, are they gonna be required to do that? Have you crossed that bridge yet? Or, and the other question I have is, like with my restaurant, I carry a pretty good amount of different varieties of beer. But if a person likes his own certain type of beer, is he gonna be allowed to bring it into my establishment, even though I have a full liquor license? Is that gonna be allowable too, under the BYOB?
Ryan?
So your first question's the insurance.
Yes.
That would be on the establishment. We've had the chief of police here, he's answered that question, it's on the establishment. Whether they get a supplemental insurance or not, is not necessarily required under these regulations.
Okay.
The second question is, can somebody bring a beer that you don't sell, a beverage that you don't sell, into your establishment?
Right.
Entirely up to you.
Okay.
So I have a quick question on that. If, if I'm a restaurant with a full liquor license right now, this does not apply, does it? Because this is meant for regi...this is meant for businesses without liquor licenses.
Correct.
Correct, but he just asked if he has, he has a restaurant and he has a full liquor license and somebody wants to bring in something from the outside, it would not be allowed then?
It's a discretion of the...
Right, but that would affect his liquor license, cause he's got different rules with a full liquor license, correct?
Yeah, I don't necessarily know what's on his liquor license, or which part of his establishment they would be in, but if somebody wants to bring a beverage that he doesn't sell into his establishment, that's a conversation with him.
Would this create a little conflict between potential owners?
I'm not taking questions, being shouted out from the audience, so hold on, please.
The other thing I just wanna mention too, that in here specifically, we did add that the businesses that apply for this BYOB have to have tips training. So it's not 100% free. I mean, that, there is a cost and a fee that's associated with training your employees.
Okay.
So it's not 100%. Whoever in the, in town just thinks that they're gonna just apply for a BYOB license, there are regulations in this, this bylaw that were, we put together that says that that was a requirement.
Now, was there any particular like restaurant that brought this up, BYOB?
To me personally, no.
No?
Was it me?
It's just brought up by the town to what, cover their chapters or the laws or what? Is that why?
Right, that's directed at you, Ryan.
Is that why, why was it, why is it being brought up? Was there a particular establishment that requested a BYOB, or?
This was brought up because this is something that's offered in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and as Councilor Hebert said, based upon the legal review that I conducted, it's almost an as-of-right ability to do this. This would create the town's licensing board to be able to govern that apparent inherent right.
Okay, and then the BYOB now, is that beer, wine, and liquor? Or is it just...
No liquor, I don't think.
No liquor, just beer and wine.
Just beer and wine.
Malt beverages and wine.
Malt beverages and wine, okay. All right, well, that's just my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Did you have something else you wanted to say?
Yeah, just real quick. All right, so if you're leaving this up to each individual restaurant, and you're gonna have people that do have it and people that don't have it. So now, you're gonna have customers in town that go to one restaurant, they have it, they go to another restaurant thinking, oh hell, I'm gonna have drink over here, but they don't have it. Some people are gonna get pissed off, and they could have a conflict with either the waitstaff over here or the owner. Now, you're forcing the owner, the waitstaff, whomever, to deal with this. You're pushing another issue onto the owners, the restaurant workers, whomever, to deal with another thing. So it's great that this is a at right or at will, whatever the hell you said, but this is just going to be another thing that you're pushing on people that apparently that no one asked for, so...
Well, apparently, according to the town manager, this is already allowed now. The reason for the ordinance is to just put some regulate, rules and regulations that can be enforced around it, such as tips certified. So right now, I would guess that if we have, and I don't know what establishments already allow BYOB, but they wouldn't have to meet that cri...the criteria of the bylaw, because one doesn't exist. So now if we're saying, if you wanna be a BYOB establishment, you have to follow these regulations. Tips certified is one of them, which actually addresses your first comment regarding, you know, knowing when someone is intoxicated and being able to deal, because that's what happened when you're tips certified, those are the things that you are recognizing, right?
I would just hate for...
The other, right, the other thing is, my understanding is when you have an establishment that is a BYOB establishment, it's usually posted, like out on the door, or so that people are clearly understand that it is a BYOB establishment. So that's strictly up to the business to determine whether or not they want to be a BYOB establishment. They don't have to be, and people would have to, I mean, you know, they would have to obviously, you know, go by, if you're gonna go to this establishment, it's not BYOB, you don't bring alcohol, you don't bring beer or wine. And, and so, you know, if, if what Ryan is saying is that's already existing now, I think putting it something in writing just actually makes it so there's, there are rules involved, so that if there are issues, they can be enforced. I'm not aware that we have any, I don't know what establishments we have right now that are BYOB. I also am not aware if we do, I've never heard of there being any issues around a BYOB establishment, so...
Ever had an issue?
Never had an issue.
So are you a BYOB establishment?
Years ago, there was quite a, you know, more than half that did have, bring it in. Now hardly anyone, if anyone brings it in, to my knowledge.
Okay, and we, so, for your establishment, did you, you don't know, hold on, if you wanna...
Yeah, we're talking with you, yeah, okay.
Okay, but if, so did you have something posted, like on your business that...
No, no, just, it's always been done in Palmer.
Okay.
And every place.
Okay, okay.
That I know of.
Okay, okay.
But not a lot of people do it, though.
Right.
No.
Okay.
So we also wrote in enforcement regulations in here too. So I mean, if you're a business and you're not following the BYOB rules by somebody bringing in hard liquor or whatnot, then that would be an offense. Or if you are not a licensed BYOB business and you get caught with people having, you know, drinks in your establishment, then there are fines for that. So this, even though this regulation is something that the town has put together to kind of give structure to the free-for-all, it sounds like, BYOB state licensing, that, or not even, right? You don't even need it, right? You said technically right now, without this, anybody can do it.
So the...
Theoretically, they could bring in hard liquor if that person allowed them to.
Well, no, they're not...
That I don't believe, that I don't think is the case.
No, I'm saying that it's a, there's no regulations for it now, so technically, with a wink and you know, Carl.
A milkshake, like at Frank's Diner.
Theoretically, it could be happening, and there's no consequences.
But would you wanna be that business owner to...
No.
Exactly, to have something happen when somebody left your business?
Right.
So I personally would not want to live with that, so...
I wouldn't, if it was like Carl's, I wouldn't want him, just, just for the reason you want him to eat and get out, so you can get another seat in there.
Turnover, yeah.
Right. You don't want him hanging out there all night drinking. Go to the, go to the local establishment that sells...
Go to Paul's.
Yeah, best burgers in town.
Yep.
I, to Paul's comment though to you, I don't, I don't understand why anyone that has a full liquor license or even a beer and wine license would also be under the BYOB.
I'm almost positive, I'm almost positive, there are rules around full liquor licenses that you're not allowed to bring in outside liquor.
Oh, there probably is.
I think there is.
The same. I was gonna say, I don't think that...
If somebody really wanted something special, they're gonna have a conversation, like Phil was, you know...
Right.
I have the law right here from Mass.
Okay.
It says, in most cases, it says, can everyone bring their own beer, wine, or other alcoholic beverages into an establishment? In most cases, no, not if the establishment has a liquor license. If the establishment has a liquor license, then no one can carry onto the premises their own beer, wine, or other alcoholic beverages.
Yeah.
Their own private consumption, so-called BYOB. If the establishment does not have a liquor license, then one must check with the city or town, this is what you guys are talking about, and in which the establishment is located, to learn if there is any local law dealing with bringing one's own alcohol into an establishment for personal consumption. The only exception is a private club. So they can't actually do that. I didn't think so. So you guys are just discussing pretty much any place that doesn't have it right now, right?
Right.
So they can't bring booze in.
Right.
Right.
So he doesn't have to worry about people bringing...
All the way in the back.
Correct, he should not have to worry about that, right.
Yep.
So that is...
Right.
Anybody else on, on this? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing at 6:55. Okay. The next item is Road Repairs Without Liability, MGL, Chapter 40, Section 6N. This is the second reading.
You want me to go ahead? I didn't know if you were gonna continue. Second reading, Amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Palmer to Adopt a Temporary Repair to Private Ways. To move that the council amend the code of the Town of Palmer, Chapter 122, Streets and Sidewalks by adding a new Article 6, Private Ways as follows. Article 6, Private Ways, Section 122-15, Temporary Repairs to Private Ways. How far in do you want me to go on this? Just the first paragraph? In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 6N, the town may make temporary repairs to private ways under the following conditions, and they're enumerated below.
Okay, I will open the public hearing at 6:57. So any comments from the council on this one?
The, the only comment that I have is that there were, there are, I should say, a lot of private roads in town, right?
Yep.
And that this would just give them an opportunity, right, to petition the town for such repairs?
This would, well, yeah, they could do that, but this would also give the town the ability to make such repairs if we also like happened to drive by and see. Like I drove, when I was driving to work this morning on 32, right, when I got to whereabouts where Rondo's is, I see all these trucks, and all I could think was, like, how much rain did we get this weekend? Oh my god, is Rondo Street still there? It wasn't, it was the state doing their own work on 32, but it's just always a concern of mine, every time we get a large amount of rainfall. So, yeah, there are definitely areas in town that are private, but they have this cascading effect into public areas, and we wanna be able to make those repairs.
Okay.
But it's a temporary repair, it's not a, it's not a full-fledged repair, it's too...
Right, whatever we put in, we will, we will make sure that it has a shelf life and fails at some point. No, I'm just kidding, joking.
Number four on there, can you explain that one to me? Betterment charges may be assessed for repairs as determined by town manager.
So usually when you go to do, well, when, we are working on the road acceptance standards now, they sorta have to be somewhat unique, town by town. In that, when folks petition to have their road accepted, they either have to pay all the engineering and all of the stuff to make it acceptable, or the town would be able to charge betterment fees to do the same. So it's the ability to have the funds to do the work on the road, without necessarily impacting all the taxpayers.
This was, this came about though because of the Rondo Road thing, right? For the emergency repairs that we did for Rondo Road?
Well, this is how, yeah, basically, it was brought to my attention, is primarily because of what's happening repeatedly on Rondo Street, but, I mean, over the past four years, and I'm sure Matt can, even in the few months that Matt's been here, there's a number of areas that, like I said, the problem, it's usually drainage problems, where the water is just, you know, literally cascading into, you know, streets that are town streets.
Right, so if anything, this is a benefit to the taxpayers, because if there is an emergency that somebody's private road washes out, that the town may or may not be able to go in and help, but this is better leverage for the town to go in and make emergency repairs.
Correct. This, this also, for, for example, you know, in some really, you know, terrible scenario, we had to go in and make a repair, let, we'll just use Rondo Street, when it totally washed away and people couldn't get back to their homes, and emergency vehicles couldn't get up. So we just went up and top coated that road. But let's just say, in doing that really fast and dirty work, just to make the road passable, we somehow impacted somebody else's property unknowingly. Well, now we're liable for that.
Got it.
This takes our liability away, if we, you know, not saying that we wouldn't make something right for somebody.
Right.
But I'm just saying that, you know, if we make a mistake and somebody is like super angry about it, you know, and they don't even give us the time to make it right, the entire town doesn't have this liability.
So it protects the town and it's a benefit for taxpayers.
Right.
Yep.
Anything else from the council?
Clear.
Okay, any questions from the public? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing at 7:01. Okay. Is there any other old business from the council? Seeing none. Next item under New Business is Department Head Report, Erin Rugiano? Close?
Close.
Okay, Conservation Agent. You can sit if you want.
You can.
You can, yeah, yeah.
Grab a seat. So I'm the new Conservation Agent, as of mid-September, I believe it was the 14th.
Welcome.
Thank you. So hit the ground running, we had both quarterly reports due for Forest Lake Watershed Assessment and for the 181 Culvert Grant, is another, another hazard mitigation project, like kind of what we were looking for for Rondo Road. So I've gotten both of those going. We had MS4 Annual Report went in for, for year four. The permit has not yet been issued for year five, that's in the works. I've had committee meetings, Stormwater Committee meeting today, so they're, they're still working on it, it's coming out, but we already have an idea of what's gonna be on the list for, in the permit for requirements for us, so we're already kind of working on it. Some of it's kinda rolling over from year four into year five, so we'll be working on that. The Forest Lake Boat Launch Complete, there's gonna be a ribbon-cutting ceremony for that next week, so hopefully we'll be able to make it, we'll see. It's currently on my list of things to do next week. Then we have the new Church Street Bridge NY coming up, so I'm working on getting all of that for our CONCON meeting in November. And then we have, we just had the MAC Conference, so that's the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions, that was this weekend. We had some really great youth organization talks with some of our, our members, and good stormwater information came out of that. So we're hoping to move forward, engaging some of our youth in town and getting... So we're hoping to move forward engaging some of our youth, uh, in town and getting, um, some, some youth organizations and some of our schools involved. So that's something that we'll be, we'll be working on in the future within the next probably couple of weeks. I hope to hear from, from the, one of the people that's running that organization. Hopefully she'll reach out to me and then we'll start kind of laying the groundwork for, uh, getting them more involved in our conservation for town. Kind of all I have right now.
Erin, did you come from another community or what's your background?
Um, I actually came from utility vegetation management, I came from where the forestry reside. I did some invasive species management. I was on the Asian Longhorn beetle eradication project out in Worcester County. Um, and then I, and I had a, a bachelor's in biology and another one in environmental science from UMass, so this was quarter, this is sort of where I ended up really wanted to, to get into, so.
Really quickly, can you tell us what you did before you got the degree in bio and environmental?
Uh, I was, uh, I was in the military. I was a nuclear mechanical operator in the Navy. So it's kind of, it's kind of the most of what I can say on that.
Very, very different sciences though.
Yeah, yeah, we're from the hard, yes, more the hard sciences to more the squishy sciences. If you wanna think about it that way.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Thank you for your service.
I have a quick thing for you.
Sure.
So there has been talk for, I'm gonna say a couple of years now about blue trails in town?
Yes.
Yes, and I'm hoping that you and our new buddy Andrew in recreation can get together and work out something and get that up and running?
Blue trails, what's?
Using the rivers.
Yeah, so, so we do, we, we are working on a few things on that. I know there's, um, we have, there's a new pamphlet coming out, um, one of our members, Nick Zo, has been really active, he's been informing me quite a bit on those. We have signage going up, we've, we're working on getting new access. Um, Bennett Street was one, um, I know that one's coming up. I think there's another one, First Street, there's, there's a few different ones. Um, and so, so we are working on that. Um, I'm a kayaker, so I'm, I'm excited to, to get into more of that, so on the list of things to do, yes.
And one thing that I'm really excited about, and I think it's gonna play into effect, is in Three Rivers, behind Ramadon's, the liquor store there, the town owns that whole corner of the river.
Okay.
And it's all overgrown. And I would love to see that corner cleaned up and people use it for recreation space on that side of the river.
Okay.
Because it looks, it's, it would be a really great spot to sit and see all three rivers come together.
Can you email me a little bit more of that description of where it is so I can pull it up and have that in mind?
You got it.
Um, an address would be great.
Yep.
Uh, because I, I am, I've been in town for two years, so I'm new to town, so I'm still trying to figure stuff out.
Even better, I'll send you pictures of GIS.
That would be great.
You got it.
So years ago, there used to be a whole vegetation plan that needed to be done for that whole.
Riprap, correct. The town owns the, the cleanup of the riprap and it's just gotten out of control over the years.
Has that still been happening? Because I think we used to.
Not since I've been here. So we tried to get it done, um, well, I was working with the previous public works director to try to get it done. There's, yeah, I, I'll have to get back to you, I don't remember all the different issues, um.
When we put the trail in at Lavalet, right, when the trail went in at Lavalet, they cleaned up from the bridge all the way down along the trail, so you can actually see and it's clean, so that was in conjunction, I think, with the fire department. The fire department.
They did a controlled burn at one time.
Right, the fire department went in there and I think we took the new brush truck, uh, the cutter, and they used the arm and they went down and they cleaned up as much as they could.
So, yeah, but we do wanna do that again. I just don't remember all of the reasons why we haven't yet, so let me get back to you.
Yeah, because I know that that was something that we, we were mandated to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I got one thing. The blue trail, that's like a, a river trail, as you say. And you've been here for two years. Have you been to Lake Sayog with the canoe?
I have not.
Trail in that river? Uh, if you, that's a beautiful one. They have campsites along the river and everything that people can call and either stay in free and.
Okay.
That's a real good, yeah, in Holland, I believe, Brimfield, Ha- Holland, well, Holland.
You must have been to the Swift, obviously, as a kayaker, so, yes.
Yeah, I have done, I've been in the Swift. I've done a lot in, um, in like the East Hampton, we've done the Mill River, La Oxbow, that, that area quite a bit. I think a few other places.
Yeah, I think it would be great for business and to, to bring people in if we had that, you know, people could recreation. We have all these rivers in town and we just need access to get to them.
And to get kids off the cell phone. Good luck. Do something.
Yeah, drop them cell phones in the river.
Yes. Drop off.
One of the thing, one of the things that was, sorry, Matt, um, one of the things that was, um, discussed, I think, as part of the master plan and also as part as the open space plan, was just the lack of knowledge, and Nick, I know you were at one of those meetings where I was at that we discussed, like, people, people don't know where the trails are.
Uh, yeah, I did.
Yeah.
And. I'll be honest, when I moved.
And I don't know where they all are and I've lived here my whole life, so I think that we need to do a better job of promoting the trails and whether it's, you know, there's grants available that we can get for, um, maps and different, different things like that, that we can, we can get state money for, and we really should try to do that because.
That's headed over towards, um, the new, uh, recreation director. He's doing a lot of that.
But I think it really has to be in conjunction with conservation and then, and then also I think that, you know, really pulling together, and I thinking your report, you talked about like trying to pull groups of people together, but, you know, getting an active trails committee. I mean, we have some great people, but it's like, it's a small group of people and, you know, in order to expand the trail system, um, and then to maintain the trail system, you really need people that are dedicated to pretty much getting out there every weekend and doing, doing different things, so. Um, I, I know that that was, that was a really high priority as part of the, the master plan and the open space, plan, and I, I think it would be great if we could see that, but I, I look at it as being both, both groups working together for sure, yeah.
Um, you brought up a good point though about it being a small group. Um, I mean, I'm gonna talk to Andrew and, um, the folks that do this work just to make, because some people don't want any publicity for what they do, but we actually have, uh, some folks in town that personally maintain some of the trails, like the Madura, you know, trails and stuff. So, uh, be happy to acknowledge those folks and the work that they do. Uh, I just wanna check with them first.
That's great. Thank you for coming in. Nice meeting you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have department head report, Matt Morse, public works director.
Hi guys.
Hi, Matt.
So I have a lot to talk about, but I tried to narrow it in the last twenty minutes while I was at my office, so. I wrote everything down, so forgive me if I'm reading down a list, but, um, anyway. DPW operations have been going very smooth and efficient lately. Uh, we're accomplishing a lot. Um, I just hit ninety days with my new assistant. Uh, she's been really kicking butt, getting our financials in order, submitting chapter ninety requests and reimbursement, so our office is running smooth as well. Uh, Rich, Brett, Ray, Jason, they've all been putting an extra effort on the highway operations and everything's been going smooth there. Dave Hansel and Jeff Pardo have been working really hard to maintain all our parks and cemeteries. And Ken, Jeff, Dennis, and Joe have been kicking butt down at the wastewater treatment plant and everything's been smooth and efficient down there. I got a couple of pages of things that we're working on now. Uh, we'll start with our sidewalk prioritization and assessment plan. McMahon and Associates started roughly two weeks ago, uh, in the Thorne Dyke section. We're gonna combine that with a little bit of RAP funding and we should start seeing, um, handicap accessible ramps, possibly this fall. Um, that's kind of a big priority for me, uh, especially with what our new roads are paved in downtown areas. We need to make sure that they're ADA compliant. Uh, we could see some of that work starting in the fall, if not, a big sidewalk and ADA compliant ramp project coming in the spring, uh, before the end of the fiscal year. Our last twenty twenty-two, chapter ninety paving project is complete up on Saint John Street. Uh, looks really good up there. It's a big change. That was a, a blighted area. The street was in really bad condition, so I'm sure those homeowners are pretty happy. I was forwarded a, a grant opportunity from Ryan McNutt, uh, that's, uh, workplace safety grant, which I applied for last week. This should cover the cost to train all of the DPW and wastewater employees in trench safety, chainsaw safety, and get them all CPR and AED certified, uh, so hopefully we get that. I'm starting to work with Pathfinder Tech on a possible co-op opportunity with the Horticultural Center. I think it's a home run right in our back door. Uh, we struggled this past summer trying to find temporary employees for our parks department. Meantime, we have a whole horticultural groundskeeping center right here, so if we can start to maybe have that tunnel, I think is a really good idea for us. Um, we've been working with the board of health, we've boarded up a few houses, uh, we're assisting with the pink house demo that's coming up in a few weeks, and we've been helping with renovations to the new dog pound in Monson. On top of all of our regular operations, road maintenance, mowing, tree trimming, parks maintenance, we have started to prep for winter weather. Multiple trucks are going up for maintenance, some need major, minor repairs. We are, we filled and serviced our magnesium chloride tank, our underground fuel tanks were just inspected and passed, and we just ordered seven hundred ton of, ahead of a road salt price increase. I ordered seven hundred ton before October first and we saved the town about seven thousand dollars. Uh, we reviewed our street, we renewed our streetlight maintenance contract with Tanco Lighting, and we are currently under negotiations with UFCW bargaining unit for a labor contract renewal. Any questions?
The number one, uh, social media question is when are the lines gonna get painted downtown?
So the elephant in the room. So we are under contract with this K five corporation. I tried to get rid of them, but I cannot find a replacement. Uh, so unfortunately, we have to deal with what it is for this year. Moving forward, the town of Palmer DPW will deem this company as a non-responsible bidder going forward. Um, and that's all I have to say at this time.
Is that the same company that did the streets in Three Rivers, Main Street in Three Rivers?
Yes.
Yeah, where the school is into the.
Into the, yes.
Yeah, okay. I hope we addressed that issue. All right. I was like, did anybody else notice that but me in there?
They put the, uh, so they're done by two different crews. Uh, usually the stencils and the parking spots are done by hand crews and the long lines are done by a driving machine. So they did a little backwards, they put the stencils down first before the long lines, before they actually measured the lines, so.
Oops.
We need improvement there. Uh, we, I had, we did have them out, I think they came out over Columbus Day weekend. Uh, they marked everything up and then they went to go pull the machine off the back of the truck and the truck broke down, so they had to turn around and drive back. So that's where we were on the eighth, ninth, and tenth. They did paint that weekend, I think, uh, roughly a hundred thousand linear feet of yellow. I think you probably saw it on Brecker Ridge or like Old Lorn Road. So we did get a majority of yellow lines down, but obviously everybody is staring at that downtown area, so. It is marked out now and it's, they told me, uh, I think two days ago that they'll be here within two weeks, so.
Hopefully before snow.
Should be buttoned up.
So question regarding the sidewalk project that you're talking about, where, where's the funding from that coming from again?
Uh, so we have initially McMahon and Associates first, uh, their bill was, I think it was twenty-five or twenty-six thousand dollars, that's gonna be paid from the casino funding. But I also, the town of Palmer, we applied and we are granted two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for RAP funding. So I wanna combine the RAP funding with the casino money, so it gives us a greater area to cover on sidewalk improvements. Obviously, we're not using all of our RAP funding because I think I've already expended close to maybe seventy thousand on some of our drainage issues, our backlog of drainage issues here in town. We had a, um, a sinkhole in the back of Station One across from Dunkin' Donuts that we had to emergency repair. Uh, we've had to put new catch bases in some of the roads, uh, that we've just paved. Uh, we had that issue, uh, up in Three Rivers, up in there, so we had to use some RAP funding for that. So, you know, once, once McMahon and Associates comes back with a full assessment, then we can dive into where we wanna spend the money and how we wanna spend the money.
Where were, where are we on complete streets? Isn't there money for that? I think we are pretty far along in that.
It's a whole process and, you know, my predecessor didn't have any notes, so we've really gotta start getting all of our projects onto the tip is what they call it. So it's gonna take a little while, but we're working on it.
Because I know that we're pretty far into that project.
Yeah, and that would help significantly, especially with our ADA compliance ramps, you know, once we start getting those things, you get a walkability score and everything, so.
Right.
Yeah, we gotta dive into it a little deeper.
And then the streetlights, I'm not sure what you, why, what you said made me think about. We had talked about the streetlights before and there was a number of streetlights that you said were out. And we talked about the fact that we had just done that whole streetlight replacement program as part of Green Communities, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
And you were supposed to, you were supposed to go back and look to see if things were under warranty, and I don't think we ever got an answer on that.
Okay. No, I honestly thought that we had some kind of contract for warranty. They were supposed to fix them. They were supposed to last for so long.
Right.
Right.
They're LED technology, so they should last a lot longer than.
Well, I'll, I'll circle back on that.
Especially with all the extra money that we had to pay for wiring on some of the poles.
Right, which apparently still, I mean, is still an issue, I believe. Um, and then, and then the other thing with the streetlights, I think, as part of that same conversation, we talked about like the bulb brightness and how you can have different brightnesses of bulbs in different areas of the town. And you were supposed to look into that too, because there's certain areas that, like, there's a crosswalk, but it's exceptionally dark in those areas. I'm thinking of like some areas on Main Street and whether just changing the wattage, and, and I don't think it's even the wattage, it's something to do with the bulb, and I'd have to like reread everything to know. Yeah, maybe. But, um, I, I think we need to look into that again too.
We do, yeah, I just had forgotten to ask that question.
Okay.
So, that's on me. I will follow up.
Any other questions for Matt?
I do, um, I had mentioned the last meeting about signage for the crosswalks on High Street and Thorne Dyke.
Okay.
I don't know if, it, I didn't hear about it being on your radar, so.
Oh, let me write it down.
There's no signage for, as you go leaving High Street this way here, going towards the junction variety, that very first crosswalk on High Street has no signage saying that there's a crosswalk ahead.
Concern is crosswalks on High Street and Thorne Dyke. I can check.
Right on the cor, uh, corner of Commercial and High, but, it's, it's on High Street, but it's right at, right before Commercial Street. If you're headed up this way, it's through that last windy corner there as you're coming around. Har- Harvey Street, I think, is right next to it. Um, there's no signage or nothing, you know, I had talked about maybe even seeing i- if through that area, whether they abide by it or not, deems, you know, the speed limit's thirty or whatever, that it actually, because of the bridge being out in that intersection, if it should be slowed down through them S-curves on High Street there, you know, or not. But definitely the signage, it does, is nonexistent of a crosswalk there.
Yeah, we'll definitely take a look at that.
Was that all you had, Phil?
Yep.
Another thing that had, was brought up by someone who had come into a meeting at one point was signage regarding the municipal parking lot down in, in Palmer.
Downtown Palmer?
Downtown Palmer.
Or like the whole Brookside is?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And the, I don't know if you guys remember, the, the, um, comment was that there's no, there's not like good signage there that lets people know that it is municipal parking there.
Parking, right.
And so I don't, you know, I, I think it would be great to, I mean, I'm not looking for like a sign that you guys can make at DPW because I think it should be, you know, a nice sign, and not that those aren't nice.
They can't make no sign.
No, I, I just said, not that you're, I'm saying that, but I think that we could, I, I don't know what you can make, but, um, I think it would be nice to look into that, and I mean, I, and see if we can put, put some signage up.
Sure. Yep.
I think if we're gonna do that, we should look at all of the, you know, because at one point we put up kind of like, and a lot of downtowns do this, you know, the signs are kind of like a little decorative and they sometimes are like, this is a historic place and, you know, Jimmy Buffett ate a sandwich here and whatever. So we should probably look at all of those signs in the downtown and see which ones are faded and out of date, and we'll just try to update them all, and then we'll add a new one for the parking.
Yeah, and then also the signs that, the, the signs that were. Yeah, and then also the signs that the, the signs that were put up as part of the community development project, like the, I don't know what project it was, but all the signage that has like the deep, you know, it has, and it's the signs like this and then they have like the little.
Yeah, I think that's what I was just mentioning.
So some of them I noticed are like, some of them are hanging off too.
We should fix those.
Yeah, we should.
That's what I.
Okay, is that what you were talking about?
If we're going to make a sign, we should just look at, make sure all of them are.
Right, but also make it so that like it's, like, we should find out like who that person was and so that we have consistency. Sorry, I didn't.
No, yeah.
No, that's what you were saying. Okay.
Yep.
All right, the only other thing I have is DPW will be partaking in the Old Mill Pond PTO trunker treat on Friday the twenty-eighth. We're going to be decorating a piece of equipment and handing out some candy.
Oh.
So feel free to see us.
I do have one, one last thing. The playground, Thorndike, the Thorndike Park, the the basketball court part of it always seems like it doesn't drain.
It's fixed. It's already fixed.
You took out the?
Yep, so what happened was.
The cap thingy and put a regular drain?
So we took the cap off and I had the vector truck go on scene to see if we can clean out the line, because if you look to the side of the basketball court, there's actually a catch basin and it connects to there and then from the catch basin, it goes to the canal.
Goes to the canal.
So the first impression was always that you're going to get some backup because the level of the canal raises.
Right.
So when that raises, your catch basin can't outflow to the to the canal. However, when the canal went down, we brought the vector truck to the middle of the court. We vacuumed it out and out came a rock, maybe the size of a of a baseball.
Okay, because somebody had just called and asked us that there was a, like a screw-in type cap that you would put a monkey wrench on to get off? And instead of that, maybe just a normal drain or whatever. But then I, I always knew that, and I can't believe they they kind of did it the same way is they drained it into the canal. So depending on the height of the canal, the canal water's higher than the park itself, it's never going to drain, correct?
Yeah, it's not, it's not done correctly. We can make it work. The problem was is that we kept putting regular caps, like plastic caps there.
Right.
And when you do, you know, like a cheesy cap, what happens is you've got kids in the playground, oh, what's this? Kind of thing and they take it out and they all get put rocks down there or put soda bottles or whatever else. So we actually put like a cast iron cap and we drilled holes in it. So that way it was screwed and mitred in, so that way nobody could really unscrew it without a pipe wrench.
Right. Okay, so that that's what's, cap is there now. That's what this guy was talking about. He's saying it seems like you need bigger holes or whatever, but you're saying that you guys been down there and you've cleaned out the pipe. There was actually a rock in there or whatnot.
Yeah, should be all set, so if anybody hears anything, just reach out if it gets logged again.
You got a monkey wrench, I guess? No, I really don't.
It was a pretty big rock, too. It's like, so somebody actually had to take this rock and like jam it down there.
So they must have had to take the cap off, too, to do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, next is Andrew St. George Recreation Programs and Depot Park Improvement Update.
All right, so interestingly, the Thorndike Playground, I I gave Matt a call while I was standing in probably eight-inch-deep water and asked him if he could go, you know, if he could go empty that drain out. So it was shortly after that, because I was, I was, you know, actually, I guess, ties right into what I was about to say in what you were talking, when you were talking to Erin about people knowing about stuff. So a lot of our facilities weren't on Google Maps. So like if you knew the Madura Family Conservation Area existed and you Google searched it, you would never find it. So that's on Google Maps now, as is as is a lot of other places that weren't. I've uploaded pictures of them as well. So in the last, last month, I think, I just got the email from Google. Last month alone, those pictures were viewed over three thousand times. So not only are they up there, but over the course of a month, there's been three thousand views. And that that's total, so like if I uploaded ten pictures of Madura and one person looked at all ten, that comes up as ten views. So not saying three thousand people looked for stuff. There have been, there have been over a thousand direct searches for places I've uploaded that that people have looked for. So just so you know, that is, that is something that is going on. There's some trails that aren't up there yet. There's one in the Shaw District up at the end of of Rondo. There's, there's really no parking, there's no trailhead, so until we figure out some of the logistics around that, I didn't want to advertise something that, you know, people would get to and not really be sure they're on a proper trail, so. But but that is, there's a lot more information out there if people are looking for it. And if you do searches for a lot of these places, it'll actually, now you'll actually find them on the town's website, like a Google search for, you know, for like Thorndike Park or Diamond Playground is its official name. You do a search for that and one of the top results is the actual town's website now that tells you where it is, tells you how to get there, has pictures, talks about what exists at the park. So that is all on on the unprocessed and on the way. So to the stuff I I had planned on talking about, one of the big things we had mentioned back in July or August, whenever I was here last, was looking at getting a disc golf course down at Burley Park. There's been a fair amount of interest and I've actually put out a sign up for people and I've had had people, you know, fill that out as people who are interested in either helping with the process or just it's something they want to participate in once it exists. So one of the, I I've met with a course designer and he's not going to design for us. He is going to consult through the process, though. I've met with other people from the other, you know, from the other area courses and leagues. Checked out all the courses within twenty minutes of here to make sure that we are going to be offering something unique, not just, you know, I mean, people in Palmer can drive to Wilbraham. There's a course ten minutes from here. But we want to make sure we're offering something different so that there's, you know, something not only for residents, but also to draw people here. And there, and there certainly is. It's a very, a very good facility for it. The basic outline of the course is done, so we're, next step is kind of the first draft on what a course would look like there. You know, kind of the detailed, where it would all go. I have put together a a little brochure that, this is a draft copy of it. We'll have real, real nice printing, so it won't have these white borders, but that's what I have access to here. And basically, what we're going to be, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be looking for sponsorship to cover the cost of building this. So the goal in this process is is not to use town money. Now, there might be some use of town resources, like some of the parks, you know, or DPW workers doing some of the the actual labor, but, you know, not having to come to a meeting and ask for eighteen thousand dollars to build something. We're going to try and do this completely through sponsorship. So I'm going to be getting that out to, you know, various, various businesses and stuff in town.